Thanks to see you.
Nice to see you today.
I love you.
You're welcome.
My seven. Okay, on the meeting seven o'clock we will start and we have a salute to the flag.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which contains one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and endless.
Thank you all for coming. Are there any announcements?
Yes.
Yes, I have one. Is there any announcements? For anyone else? To have a moment of silence for a little Compton resident who passed away recently, Gil Olivero. Thank you. The motion approved in minutes. I guess. Second. Discussion. All favor.
Hi.
Department head reports don't have a motion. Motion to place up from head reports on five.
Second, just want to pull one out. Um. Task successor Denise Cosgrove. I requested a record low of seven abatements, final submitted ending a loss revenue of three thousand five hundred and seventy dollars and fifteen cents, most of which was a clerical error so. If anyone's wondering Denise is doing her job quite well. Right. All favor? I'm opposed. Old business discussion to consideration hiring a director of senior services. Do we have it on the screen Carol? No. Yes. No. Read this folks if you don't have it. On um just so everyone know what we're going to do. We're going to discuss hiring a senior service director. But first we have to create the position. So we're gonna discuss it between the four of us and see if we create a position. Then if we do create a position, we're able to discuss hiring one of the three candidates that we interviewed today. That's what's gonna happen now. Um I will read this first um and Victoria help me. Are you a good reader?
I'd like to think so.
I'd like to think so. The director has seen, this is gonna be so quick overview. The director of senior services is a new position for Little Compton. Town council is regularly communicated with community members to develop this role. The history of that work. Victoria is going to read the rest.
Great. Uh so the council first heard from seniors during public comment um at town council meetings. This is where the need for the role was publicly discussed and deliberated. The council took two actions concurrently. Invited the group of seniors to develop a draft job description to bring back to the council. And commissioned a community wide senior needs assessment survey. When the council received the draft job description, it was noted in the meeting minutes that the council president quote hoped the survey results would enlighten the council as to the actual needs desired by the residents who responded. He did not know if the job description is accurate to meet those needs. Bill RFP reflected only the original draft job description as the survey results were still pending. So that's sort of the first, the first step. The next step, once the senior needs assessment survey results were presented. The council determined that the RFP language should be modified and augmented to include new scope pertaining to collaboration, communication and coordination along with more specific language around technical proficiency and digital literacy. The RFP was amended and reissued and the council extended the posted period. Last chunk. The town council is then contacted stakeholders and representatives from organizations involved with the senior community. The community center, the wellness center, Brown Hill Library, stay at home in Little Compton. The counselors also consulted with Sue Sisson, Director of Social Services and Sergeant Caitlin Silveira, LCPD Senior Advocate. Notes from these meetings and discussions informed the revised position outline. It is not meant to be exhaustive but to capture the community's priorities while utilizing existing programs and services. The new director of senior services will report to the town council.
If anyone has any questions about what was just read or anything tonight. You'll have to go up to the podium because if you're listening online, they won't be able to hear you. So if you just want to raise your hand and walk your way up. That's what you're gonna have to do. So if there are any questions about what was just read. Um we'll have a copy of that. We should have copies of that. And we'll put some out. So the pleasure of the council now is to discuss. We have another document here. We'll also make this available also. We're gonna discuss about um making this position. Um. And what we need to do as a council is a few things. We have to agree this is a part time twenty hour a week with no benefits. Do I need to vote on every one of these things?
I'm gonna make a collective motion.
Oh, thank you. Do we want to talk about the uh part time twenty hours a week and no benefits? Want to continue?
Continue.
Okay. The beginning start date would be February tenth twenty twenty five with a review uh on five fifteen twenty twenty five and the council will do that review. Is that okay with the council so far? Not seeing that, yeah?
The um the director will differ from other department heads in which the review of the director will occur by the council. Is that is that where you?
That's up for discussion.
I mean, is that where we are in this discussion?
That's where we are in this discussion.
Okay.
I'm happy to uh discuss that early.
Okay. It would seem to me that uh the issues that may develop would be department level, department to the department. So it would be helpful if that person uh were hired by the council, which is the practice with department heads. And then report to the administrator so as to have a level of recommendation that comes to us that says, here's how I think this person is doing in their role. That would give us a uh an opportunity then to to review the person if we felt that there was some special need.
I agree with you totally and and thought that in the beginning. Just so you know.
All right.
All right.
Hopefully I did not disabuse you of that idea. So you changed your mind.
No, I'm just letting you know. Any other discussion, discussion on that point? Okay. The I'll, I'll really rate having trouble with that word. Uh see, do you, do you uh to be determined right now between the town council uh meeting tonight? When anyone like to take a stab at it, I'll really rate.
Perhaps I'd set the field by saying we have no budget specifically established for that and we
I can, I can see I can do that a few more.
No, but I'm just saying we're deep within a fiscal year, so we do need to decide what it is. But we realize that it comes from resources that are not identified in the budget process for fiscal twenty five.
Right, so we have twenty weeks left of fiscal uh twenty five before we get into fiscal twenty six. Um so we're gonna have to find the funds for this job, which is gonna be twenty hours a week. Um and it's uh twenty weeks, which is four hundred hours. So whatever we decide that hourly rate is, we'll times four hundred times that. And we'll need that chunk of money. And as council motion says, where we're gonna get that money? Well. We have a nine thousand two hundred dollar grant from the Office of Healthy Aging. We also have another grant from uh it's a senate legislative grant for a thousand dollars. So that gets us pretty close. To get the rest of the nickels and dimes, um there's other places that we can go. And I would say those would be the contingency account salary reserve, the reserve fund and the senior sets budgeting. That's where the money is gonna would come from if we decide to uh appoint uh this job. It would be two grants and we would use those other accounts to fund that until we get to fiscal twenty six and twenty weeks. With a thought of putting this job in the budget for twenty twenty six, fiscal twenty six. Boy, any questions on that? Go ahead.
I was gonna make a recommendation based on the uh information we were given from the applicants we interviewed. I think thirty dollars an hour would be a good starting place as an offer.
He has thirty.
About twenty twelve thousand dollars for the rest of the
Thank you for the, for the math on that. Now, twenty hours a week. Uh twenty weeks, four hundred times thirty dollars an hour would be twelve thousand dollars. Again, we have an Office of Healthy Aging grant for ninety two hundred and another legislative grant for a thousand. And hopefully we can coddle the rest up from the other budget accounts I just said. So I have thirty dollars on the table. I have a question. You have a question. Go ahead.
I do have a question. Sorry. Before you go too far down this rabbit hole. It's not just the salary that you have to look for funding for because you put in that job description, you were advertising mail lists and all kinds of other things. So you're going to need money for some of that.
Department expenses.
Department expenses.
Yeah, I'm just, I don't want you to just think, oh, it's twelve thousand. We're all good. It's gonna be more than that. Advertising is not cheap. Paper is not cheap. Printing and mailing is not cheap.
Thank you for that. So Andrew, can you, can you resend that? Please resend it. Rescinded. So we have to get a number for an hourly rate. We have to get a number for department expenses. Those are the two numbers I see. We have a town issued laptop and cell phone.
You will have to purchase the Andrew.
Okay. And and cell phone. We'll put that under department expenses. And that's what, so we're gonna have to have a motion for department expenses in hourly rate. Which one would you want to choose first?
Well, I liked um Andrew's suggestion of the hourly rate at thirty, given that that was the the low end of the proposed hourly rates from the candidates. So I think that's a good starting place where this is the new position for us and remains to sort of be seen what it, what it becomes. I think that's an appropriate place to start.
Okay. Do I have a second? Second. Discussion.
The, the, the intended would be a thirty dollar an hour offer with what? Uh department expenses or hourly?
We just got the, we just got the hourly rate. So that would be the next, the next phase. So how does that work since we don't know exactly what those would be? Do we just sort of give it like a round allowance number that we estimate? For purposes of this meeting?
We're gonna have to come up with a department expense number, yes.
I don't, I don't know how to uh just
It's a six week, six week, uh sorry. A twenty week number. I'll make a motion a thousand dollars for department expenses. All right, but well.
Stop being realistic.
Okay, do that.
With what you assigned.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't. I didn't, the administrator have a suggestion? There was, there was
I would say refer to me to work out the details of the department expenses. As party associated with the current budget process about to begin.
The current budget, yes. Okay. Do I have a motion on the table?
Yes, you do. Thirty dollars an hour made by Victoria, second by Andrew.
Do we want to add the language of the um department expenses to it? Refer to the town administrator.
Should I amend my motion to? Yes, alright, so I guess I amend my motion.
To include that.
To include, yeah, the department's uh expenses as recommended by the town administrator.
So. And we're in discussion still? Any further discussion? No. All in favor? All right. All right, okay. All right. We have a new position.
The title was director of senior service.
Correct. Now, I will entertain a motion to hire one of the three applicants. Would someone like to make a motion? I'll make a motion to hire Pam Coward.
Second it.
Discussion.
What was your sense of the candidate that we needed to make a special person?
Oh, I just thought she was an excellent candidate. She was awful. And I think she could do the job. Uh the only reason, and I think they're all very close. I think they're all very good candidates up here. Yes, can make.
Yeah. You, you and the vice president, I believe, were
Yes.
Interviewed something on person.
Yeah, I think, I think she was a good candidate, uh local, capable. Um I would say uh just in differentiation between, between her and and the proposed um higher, I would say she was um not as uh I don't know dialed in is the correct term, but she wasn't as dialed in on the, on the results of the senior survey and some of the other things that got discussed here tonight in our interviews. Um so I think that was a little bit of, a little bit lacking, a little bit of, yeah, for me. Um though, and I just felt Pam was a very strong, very strong candidate for what we've you know, we, we sort of are, are building this position like a, you know, building the airplane as you land it sort of, you know, and getting cremation as we go along and trying to make the best decision as we can as we're landing the plane. And I think, I think that's to me Pam, Pam was the, the best applicant for the position.
Yeah, I think she had great energy. I, I think that she hit all the points I wanted to. Uh you can read her resume here um in her general overview. It's all about collaboration. Um it's all about clear communication among community groups. Uh addressing duplicate services. Addressing transportation, which was uh something that was very important in the survey. Uh I think she's somebody that can bring this town together in this um, you know, specific role. Um and it's a chance for this town to work together, to be collaborative. And to have uh an outcome that we all can be proud of. So we're doing the hard work here. Um but it's gonna be the town that's going to put this over the line. So I'm hopeful that we can do that. We've done the best we can. Um I think we've got someone with a lot of energy. Hopefully she'll take our, our offer. And uh it's a, a, a start that uh, you know, hopefully has a good ending.
Okay, thanks.
Patrick.
Another, I gotta hand it up.
Yep.
There it is.
You said to hire. Is that how you want the vote to read or do you want to make an offer of employment to?
Yes, you know what, I, you know, I had that written down and I can't find it on my paper. I had, I had that. Uh can you give me that language?
What I said, what is it? Offer of employment to Pam Coward.
Offer of employment. I thought there was another one in there. Offer of employment to Pam Coward. For senior services director. Alright.
At a rate of thirty dollars.
So I'm in my motion to offer, offer uh employment to Pam Coward at a rate of thirty dollars an hour to senior service director. That's my motion. You've seconded it.
Did I second you? Second you again.
Yeah, do it again.
I seconded you.
So we're still in um discussion. Any other discussion? All favor? All right. I see none of this. Thank you. Thank you for everyone that helped out. It was uh quite a process. Thank you. Okay. Listen to Consider adopting a resolution to request Rhode Island General Assembly that the Friends of Little Compton Wellness Center, in front of taxation, solicitor.
Uh the cited statute resolution that you have before you, section forty four dash three dash three uh contains a list of nonprofit um corporations, LLCs and other types of organizations that provide public services to the communities that they serve. We did this last year for the uh Little Compton Game Club. The Wellness Center uh requested that uh that happened. Uh them. The General Assembly needs to enact this ordinance, uh this uh statute amended so that the Little Compton Wellness Center is included. Uh the General Assembly will not do that um without a resolution from the town council. Once this is enacted, we'll be forwarded to the General Assembly, to your legislative delegation. And uh it should go through on the ordinary, but if they have any questions there at the state house, they'd be happy to answer them.
Go ahead, any motion? Someone?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? All right. I don't see any opposed. Thank you, Solicitor. You warmed up now, Solicitor? Kind of. Old business three, iteration of a request to continue a past practice of providing separate checks to employees for monetary dispersments outside of the normal payroll wages. Would you like to opine on this one, Solicitor?
Well, uh first I think it's appropriate to uh uh um have the town administrator weigh in. I, I understand the question is whether or not for different types of compensation. Uh the practice of having separate checks issued for each one of those happen. My only question is, is whether or not uh this is done by paper check or is it done electronically? I'm not
Don't do paper checks, man.
You do.
Not, not for payroll.
Okay. No, you're right. Okay, so I, and there is an option through paychecks. The employee can opt for three options to, to uh direct funds to different, three different areas, three different accounts. Your own charts.
The, the matter is being grieved. Can we just say that uh it will be addressed uh through the paychecks on that? It, it doesn't seem like it's, it's uh should be an issue.
Do you word it that way? Or do you say that the council agrees to continue to allow the practice to handle the checks or the amounts separate?
Correct, electronically.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yes, you do.
I would, yes. I think it's a good idea.
What do you think the motion say?
That the council agrees that the past practice of um issuing compensation to separate um to separate accounts electronically up to three should be continued.
So I'll make a motion to accept the past practice of issuing checks to separate accounts electronically up to three. Have a second? Discussion. Not seeing any. All in favor? All right.
May I ask for a second motion?
Yeah.
In that based upon the council's prior uh action uh that the grievances considered to be resolved.
Basic. Go ahead.
I move that based upon the council's past, based upon this action, the council considers the uh grievances submitted that are related to this issue are resolved.
Second. Discussion. All in favor? All right, please. Thank you. Four. Vote to ratify the salary increase granted to BTW Direct Vice on a successful three month review as per contract. Do I have a motion to throw by that salary?
Okay.
Discussion. All in favor? All right, thank you. New business except the resignation of Jack here from the planning board due to the recent appointment the Little Compton Housing Trust's unexpired term is listed under and new business two, due to the volume of individuals on the planning board. Um I don't think we need a motion for that, do we? Let's accept that or do you want a motion?
Normally you accept it.
Okay, we'll accept that.
Motion to accept.
Should I accept? Do I have a second?
Second. With uh with gratitude.
Gratitude and a wonderful All favor? All right. Two, accept letters and interest for the following through appointments or setting interviews as needed. So you're gonna need your calendar supports at some point and that's Conservation Commission members. There's three. Carol, I got a feeling we have three.
Yes.
So accept the motion to appoint those three.
I move that we reappoint three incumbents, Ed Bowen, Carol Truckee and Bill Richmond of the Conservation Commission.
All in favor? Uh, thank you. Thanks. Harbor Commission. Uh there's two Harbor Commission members, local conservation representative and SPA slash SPC representatives. Those are three year terms. I think we have two.
Motion to approve uh Tom Graham's local conservation representative and Chris Perry is the SPMAS PC representative for the Harbor Commission.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Thank you, Andrew. Planning Board, the four year term. We also have another planning board seat. Uh an expired term of, which expires February first, twenty twenty eight. And it seems that we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, Carol?
Yes.
We have eight for two seats on the planning board. My recommendation is that we interview these eight, obviously, for the two positions. This January thirtieth and February sixth, both Thursdays. February sixth is a uh town council meeting. So we can do, you can do all eight then, which is Carol's choice. I disagree.
I'm not available January thirtieth.
Oh, okay. I mean, do we want to run the gauntlet of, of, of eight on February sixth?
I think we could.
Keep it fresh.
You, you only need like fifteen minutes per second, if that.
So eight times fifteen minutes is what?
Probably two hours, but it'll be less.
It'll probably end up being less, but
Okay, is that the consensus of the, of the council?
Yeah.
So we will hold
On the planning board once.
We'll hold eight interviews starting at five o'clock on February sixth and Carol. Um you'll set those up.
We'll try.
Thank you so much. Okay, the, the next one would be the recreation committee member. It's a three year term. There's one, two candidates, if I'm not mistaken. Yes. I would also like to sit up and interview for that, not on the sixth. Okay, I'll leave that with you.
Just starting at four.
That's fine. Will you set that up, please?
Set it up for Wendell.
Yeah.
What can you do, Andrew?
We want to delegate.
Yeah, I don't think we Yeah, I'm happy to do it. Uh and anybody else that wants to do it with me.
Well, if you can get a forum that's able to do it during the day at some point in time, if these, either of these are able to do that. We'll just have to post for that special meeting, that's all.
Yeah. Okay. You want us to date? Is that what you want?
Look at me, I'm not the one who's meeting.
You just want a date? You want us to give you a date? January thirtieth.
At what time? Are you looking for sometime during the day? Or you want to do like four o'clock, knowing that?
Five o'clock.
We already know Andrew is not available. Are you possibly available, Tom?
Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
All right, thank you. The next one is
Could you remind me of which uh seat we are?
Recreation is to
Two people for one seat.
One seat. Next one is three warden, annual appointment in January. I, I will make that motion to uh Jason Bertrand, second. Uh any discussion? All in favor? All right, thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Home rule charter. Review, the two year term, there's seven. And I think we have eight. Five, six, seven, eight, you have nine.
I'm sorry, I missed.
Eight. Eight, and we need seven and we have one Ed Bowen who said if needed. So I'm gonna exclude Ed Bowen. Cause he's not Cause he's not needed. Cause we have seven. Would you like me to name those? Leslie Fox, and he's Finney, Jennifer Flatter. Betty Sarandis, I don't know how to say that last name, Travis Audi, Claudia McNeil and Andy Ryan. Do I have a motion? Yep, go ahead.
Nope, go ahead with the motion.
I'll second it.
An elected official. Serve on the Charter Review Commission, I don't know the answer to that.
Oh. Uh, he's on the school committee. That might prevent him from being on there actually.
I I don't, I don't know what.
School committee, it does prevent. The travel staff, he can't be on. And it puts Ed Bowen back.
It is needed, it's nice, feel needed. Um.
Hey, man, what's what's the, is the question? I'm asking if an elected official can serve on the Charter Review Commission. That's, I don't know the answer to that, I'm just asking.
Anderson, uh, is there a specific prohibition in the in in the charter with regard to this? There's no?
Well, it seems to recall, and I don't know the exact. Chapter and verse, that if you served on the Town Council or the School Committee, you were prohibited from doing other. Actions within the town, so.
Actually, that, I think.
Only conditions.
Specific legal question that should have the specific legal answer, and. I. I I don't recall, I mean, there have been, what, five or six? Previous Charter Review Commissions by now. A a lot of town official, different town officials have served on those. Commissions, so I I don't know whether the school committee, whether the case, whether it's a case of the school committee prohibition. Um. There are also possibilities that there could be. There arguably, there could be issues arise with with any member of. Conflicts of interest if they're discussing the change to the board they're serving on. That would be a case by case, issue by issue. So I I guess all I'm saying is without having to serve, there may be a school prohibition, as you say, in school. But I I'm I'm not aware of any other prohibition in our charter that prohibits anybody from being. Any, any, there's a lot of town officials who care about it, whether the school committee is.
Yes, but I I thought there was something specific to the Town Council not being able to serve. But that might be just as an employee. And school committee had prohibition, but that also may be tied into the.
Employee. Yeah.
Um, so sir, I know you, I think they are.
I know you're digging.
Got about sixty more seconds to give a definitive answer on the whole thing.
Um, if there's no objection, I'm going to, we have a motion on the table, can can we take it off? Did you make the motion?
I think I made the motion. It it went three ways. The one I finally took was Victoria and you seconded.
I'll believe that.
He started.
Resend your motion.
I'll rescind that.
I'll rescind my second, we'll go on to the next one. And uh, if there's no objection, we'll go back to that one on the committee. Uh, Pension Committee Member, unexpired term of June twenty twenty five, Bob, what did you have something to say on this?
I have um. A. I I don't have a close deal with anyone yet.
Oh, I thought you had a verbal from him.
I do, but uh, but I would like to have it. Like. Kirk Sampson has just experienced a significant loss, and I would like to not. Put him on record as being willing to serve yet until I have a chance.
Okay, alright, happy to table that.
We'll just, we'll put it on the next agenda.
I move to uh. Move the reappointment of a uh pension committee member to our next meeting, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, next. Consider directing the town administrator to establish through the finance director, interest-bearing account. At the local branch of Bay Coast Bank. Do I have a motion for that?
Still moved?
Have a second. Any discussion?
My, the the response we eventually received from Bay Coast. Uh. Offered this language, and I don't know if it's significant to what your intention is with respect to this. Uh, she opined that it would would be a, an account. To consolidate, to open a municipal money market account at the local branch of Bay Coast. To consolidate banking relationships and maximize current income. I don't know if that was critical to what the origin of this this thought was, but. That seemed to me to capture why it was we wanted to do it.
You're absolutely correct.
So I will read that again.
Would you like to?
I will make the motion.
Uh, we have a motion.
That should be reset.
Let's reset, reset, reset tonight.
Sorry, Carol.
Who made the motion? You did?
Okay, Victoria made it, Andrew second.
I'll rescind.
Recent.
Thank you, Bob.
I move that we uh open a municipal money market account at the local branch of Bay Coast Bank. To consolidate banking relationships and maximize current income.
I will second that motion. Any further discussion? Yes.
This, and the and the matter's gonna be referred to the uh uh Town's auditors uh on this.
Yes.
You wanna add that to the motion?
I'd prefer if you did.
So.
I I agree to amend my motion to include the solicitor's uh proviso that that the matter be referred for comment to the Town's auditors.
And we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
If we could just go back for a second, a review of the uh charter in the uh town.
Yes, we're gonna go back to. Uh, the uh, so yeah, Home Rule Charter Review Committee, two-year term, thank you, go ahead.
Well, it turns out Mr. Anderson's correct.
She's correct, she's only got a lawyer. She's correct.
There there is no uh prohibition in the charter or the town code for a school committee member. To serve on uh on a charter commission.
I like to make the motion to name Leslie Fox, little Finney Jaffrey Flather, Betty Sarandis, Travis Audi, Claudia McNeil, Andy Ryan. To the Charter Review Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, it's the Council's pits of the Board of License. Commissioners. We have an application with Stocking Horse Inc. and any bars removed for additional license of the operation of restaurant. On completion of renovations, additional license of fixulating holiday sales, entertainment and jukebox plus BB license. United January ninth, twenty twenty five, contingent upon meeting state and local requirements. My guess is they forgot to do this last time.
Hmm, yes.
Just to make that clear, do I have a motion? I'll make the motion, I'll make the motion, do I have a second? A second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Communication. Request from the Systic Trevor Rosas Foundation, the Master of Island Chapter. To conduct the twenty twenty five cycle of life bicycle rides to Little Compton on September twentieth. Brain dates, September twenty first. Notification has been sent to the police.
I'm moved to approve the request subject to all local and state requirements, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. To copy of resolution adopted by the Charles downtown council. Requesting the Rhode Island General Assembly to fully fund the transportation categorical funds between state and regional school districts.
I move to place this matter on file.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Three requests received from Little Compton Wellness Center seeking this figure twenty six budget funding of twenty eight thousand dollars. We can put that, make a motion to put that into our budget folder for consideration.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Request sent to the Town Administrator from Wildlife Clinic for Rhode Island seeking a subsidy. Of one thousand seventy eight dollars to supplement the caregiving. By the clinic to Little Compton patients. Uh, do I need a motion for that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Offer the same motion, place this matter in the uh budget file for the Town Administrator to return last.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Five requests, Little Compton three fifty committee seeking budget funding for the FY twenty six warrant. Uh, I don't see a number on your request.
Fifty thousand.
It was it?
Yes.
Oh, it's not on the agenda. Put it in the budget files for consideration? I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Abatement list by task setter, correction of percent, lead value. We're gonna make a motion to accept that.
I move to approve the abatement list as submitted.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Consent.
Wish to place a consent calendar in file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Name of bills.
Must retain bills.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, do we have a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Alright, sorry, thank you all so much.